Followed us meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. We'll start with an invocation by Councilman Tonsmire, followed by the pledge by Councilwoman Ste- uh, Hodge. If you'll please step. Carrie's gonna do the pledge after Louis does the invitation.
Please stand. Let us pray. For people of several traditions, this is a season of special meaning. And that they and ourselves may find in this season the purpose for our lives and the strength of doing what is best. To add to that same blessing upon this council, that we make wise decisions. In his God's holy name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Keeler, the roll, please.
Carrie Hodge, Ward 1, here. Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonsmire, Ward 3.
Here.
Lindsay McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5, here. Lori Pruitt, Ward 6.
All right, our first item is the approval of the council meeting minutes from both our December 1st and our December 8th meetings. Ms. Tate, you said in the work session there were a couple of edits that needed to be made to those. If you could point those out, and then we'll any other discussion that may follow.
Uh, mayor, they've been made. Thank you, I appreciate it. And it was just a template problem. It certainly wasn't there on her part. So the both amendments are correct. Now, a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes for both meetings are approved. We have a second reading of zoning and annexation requests. ZMA 11-01 and the corresponding Z11-05. Mr. Menino.
Uh, thank you, mayor and council. As you noted, this is a second reading. There have been no additions or changes since the first reading. Um, staff is putting together an annual amendment to the zoning ordinance to bring it up to speed with the zoning cases since the last adoption. Um, at the same time, we're requested to take a look at zoning along South Avenue. Uh, with that, we've prepared two maps. One with all the zoning cases that's been in the map up to current as of today, and then a second map that also includes additional changes along South Avenue for property that's currently zoned MU, in which we have changed or proposed to change that to R7. With that, it was presented to the planning commission. Uh, there was thorough discussion with the planning commission, and the planning commission chose to recommend adopting the map, but not including a portion along South, any changes to South Avenue. So adopting with the zoning changes that have occurred over the past year. Uh, with that, again, we have prepared two maps. One with changes, one without. Map A is without the changes. Map B is with changes to South Avenue.
Okay. Any questions for Randy at this point?
Understanding that if there are residents along South Avenue who do wish to make the change in zoning, that they can initiate them.
Sure. They have every right to come before an individual, case by case, or property by property basis.
Okay. All right, I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA 11-01 and its corresponding Z11-05. Anybody wishing to step forward and speak either for or against may do so at this time. And for our clerk, please, your name and your address.
Hello, Diane Mayne. I reside at Six Twenty. I was out on Tinnor Road, and I have five properties on South Avenue, and we have previously discussed my desire to keep that in MU for several reasons. Basically, the MU status would be financially more feasible if we had to do something down the line and sell it. I think we could certainly market it better if it remained in MU status. Uh, we do a lot of work with that property, as I've stated before, it's been done in the family since 1920s. We're in fourth generation. So, you know, we, we know that area and love that area, and really don't plan to make any changes as far as having or selling the property, but in case that has to happen at some point, I would prefer to keep that in MU status. I'm going to try to answer any other questions if you have any, and I do appreciate your consideration.
Mayor, I have a question for Diane. Diane, you just said five properties. When I look up there and count, it's six. Is that, is that the empty lot on the corner?
Empty lot is, I wish to, did I miscount? There's 12, 16, 20, 22, and the vacant lot.
So five, six parcels and five homes.
That one, you know, it's 12, 16, 20, 22, and the vacant lot.
So that whatever 18 is, there's probably, they're not contiguous. There's a space in between there, right?
There's the vacant lot on the corner, and there's 22 that are joined that, 20, number 16, and number 12.
They are all contiguous.
Oh, okay, there's just no 18.
Five properties.
I got you.
Four homes, I have one is vacant lot.
Okay, very good. All right. Any other questions? Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wishing to step forward, speak for or against may do so at this time? And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for case 11, Z11-05. Counsel, any further discussion, or Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I'll make a motion. Uh, let's see, Mr. Menino, let's see, I'm doing this correctly.
Option A would be the one that leaves that section of South Avenue as MU. Option B would be to change it to R7.
Yeah.
Or, mayor, if I may, you could just, if that's what you're aiming towards, you could make a motion to accept the recommendation of the planning commission, um, and that simplifies it a little bit.
That's right. Thank you.
That sure does. Then I'll make that motion. I make a motion to accept, uh, what came from the planning commission.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is the first reading of a rezoning application, Z11-06.
Thank you again, mayor and council. Uh, this property is located in the 4th South Dixie Avenue. The applicant owns this property that is currently zoned MU, requesting to rezone the property to GC. This property lies on the other side of the Old Quality Inn. I mean, it's now called Roadway. And I'd like to make one quick correction that was pointed out during the work session. Uh, we noted in the analysis that the property was in Ward 4, and is actually in Ward 2, which is two steps forward. That correction, the applicant, uh, like I said, the GC zoning district, the planning commission, had a public hearing. They did recommend approval of this application with two stipulations. Uh, those two stipulations were no storage vehicles on the site, and no auto repair on the site today. Those stipulations actually came from a letter provided by the applicant as part of our application, so the applicant is fairly aware and had no concerns with those particular conditions that were noted by the planning commission. With that, they did recommend approval of the project. I'll raise it then.
Okay, questions for Randy on this item? Thank you, Randy. I'll open up a public hearing regarding case Z11-06. Anybody wishing to step forward, speak more for or against may do so at this time? And seeing none, we will, uh, close the public hearing on that. This will be taken up at our first meeting in January for a vote. There will be no vote this evening, and so we will move on from there. We have a resolution.
Uh, yes, mayor and council. Uh, this is regarding the CHIPS program. This is the fifth round of, uh, CHIPS funding that the city has received. Uh, this, this particular round is for $300,000. This is part of the first time, um, homeowners program to help with down payment and closing cost assistance. Yes, this is the fifth time we've been able to receive this, and, uh, we've done several things to allow us to move up the scale when applying for grant applications, and they are very supportive of the city's efforts. So far, uh, we've received 1.25 million in grant funding as part of this program dating back to 2000. Um, we've assisted 87 homeowners, uh, first time homeowners purchasing homes. Uh, the additional $300,000 grant will allow us to assist at least 25 additional. Would you recommend your approval?
Okay, any questions on this item, or any discussion? And if there is none, the Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Randy. Our next item is a discussion item about a proposed community garden, and we did spend a little bit of time talking about this in the work session regarding the fact that when citizens, or organizations, or businesses, or churches have an idea that, uh, that seeks to enhance our community, we certainly welcome that with open arms. Uh, and this is kind of a, we're in the very front end infancy of this idea. I'd like to ask Dennis Collier to come forward and speak to us briefly about the proposal that he submitted to council. And even though I just introduced you, if you'll say your name and your address for our clerk, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Dennis Collier, 401742, Frank Harris, Park Drive. And I'm part of the first presidere insurance, and one of the half-lives, uh, skimmed out the problem that's going there, community gardens, reach a lot bigger than the community. So I put together this proposal to look at sites, uh, and it's just an organization says, uh, sites in Park and the Garden, several sites that we looked at, and seven and all, three of them are to be owned by the City Department. So I've come here tonight just to ask that you look and consider this opportunity for a community garden, and the possibility to the City Department be involved with it, for this legal type deal, or some kind of partnership. And that's all, again, so in the organization stage, and I'm just a one man person at this point in time, so that's what we ask.
And I know that, I know the plan, since we were speaking about earlier, would be a lot to be done on the front end at this point. Like you said, you're kind of a one-person show on this right now, but would include the setting up of a 501(c)(3), getting a check, gauging public interest to see if anybody was interested in this, and then soliciting, uh, some type of backing and getting partners that would want to be involved, the recruitment of a board, a lot of work to be done before.
Uh, yeah. So get communities together, set things up, looking at different grant opportunities that are out there, and that kind of thing, get the organization considered and involved. And I said there's several of the sites which want to look at what are maybe the possibilities of this organization trying to offer.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. And I would just, you know, mention that, uh, to council, that as this, this discussion item is, as you heard, there's, there's an idea, there's a lot of work to be done on it, and I think that work needs to be done before we start really talking about our steps and our involvement, or what we might have to offer with that.
That's important.
But it's a discussion item. Anybody else wants to talk about it, you're welcome to. Not chatty tonight. I'm not going to argue with you. Uh, we look forward to getting a report back and, uh, and seeing what happens from that. Next item is, uh, regards the less developed census tract extension. Ms. Lemon.
Thank you, mayor and council. In 2010, the Department of Community Affairs designated two census tracts in the jurisdictions of Cartersville and Barton County as special incentivizing zones. Those are the census tracts where Trinity Rail and Mohawk Industries and Blue Building Products formerly operated. Because there were a significant number of dislocated workers, as the state uses, uh, those census tracts were eligible for some special incentives. Those incentives benefit, um, other certain types of businesses in those census tracts who want to create jobs. It encourages us to go ahead and do that by rewarding some additional job tax credits. We received the original designation in 2010. Um, come 2011, the economic conditions were still such that we could apply for an extension, and you all allowed, um, a joint, uh, a set of joint letters between this city and Barton County to go to the Department of Community Affairs and ask for an extension. That was granted, but expires December 31st this year. It is not too soon for us to go ahead and be proactive and apply for yet another extension. Based on our research that just came in this week, it seems that we're still eligible for that less developed census tract status, and therefore the rewards for the businesses who want to create jobs in those areas. Tonight, I'm seeking permission for the mayor to sign a letter that I've drafted, and I trust that he's okay with, um, in terms of editing. Once, once that's completed, we'll accompany a letter that the commissioner has prepared, and that'll be sent off to the Department of Community Affairs. It won't be too compulsory, but it's, it's not too soon to go and, again, be proactive at this point.
Okay, questions from Linda on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to authorize the mayor to sign this letter.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Hale, you've got the next item?
Uh, we'll let Mr. Hale go ahead and go on home. I'll handle that.
Sam, you've got the next item?
Sure. This is an update of an ADA transition plan with Crofton Associates. Uh, essentially be to study buildings that we offer programs in and have those comply with the ADA requirements, federal requirements, and do that by 2012. The, uh, contract amount, I believe, is $9,700. Uh, these folks are familiar with these type plans, and, uh, we did some research to try and find them and found these folks that are, uh, actually did design on the, uh, police and fire headquarters. They also do this too, so we'd recommend, uh, this for your approval.
Okay. Questions, comments, or motions?
Mr. Grove, for $9,700, they come into eight buildings and basically just walk through and document where there may be weaknesses of ADA claim.
That's correct.
Is that?
Yep, that, that's, that's my understanding of it.
And it's a piece that we must tear up for DOT.
Uh, yeah, GDOT, uh, outlined it to us, but it's a federal requirement. I would imagine that for any federal funds that you apply for, you'd have to have this in place. I think this was something that was mentioned at a conference we were at. There was ADA and some other things that, uh, if you didn't have them up to date, they could be potential weaknesses for you, so.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. Quists.
Evening, mayor and council. Uh, about a year and a half ago, the city was awarded, uh, $300,000 for the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Lot Grant. Uh, the crux of our application involved a project to retrofit the lighting across the vast majority of the city-owned, uh, facilities, and, uh, we're now at that time where we, uh, we have bid out, uh, the project with the help of a lighting design professional. Uh, we received four bids on the project, and we are recommending a low bid of $238,300. Again, all this is being covered by the grant, um, the grant. Uh, you have the, say, the verified documents in hand. The attorney's office has reviewed the contract.
Okay, questions for Tom on this?
We discussed this, and we advertised, what'd you tell me, Hal?
Uh, it was actually a requirement to advertise it in the local paper for a month.
Okay.
So unfortunately, we didn't, didn't receive any local bids on it. Um, all the, all the folks that ended up submitting bids were out of line.
It specialized, I mean, pretty much specialized work, or just something that just made you...
I think it's kind of the scope would be, my guess, uh, just the size of it.
Yeah.
It's, it's, uh, it's a pretty big project, um, that requires a pretty, you know, substantial manpower.
This is some of the oft-discussed, seldom-seen, uh, theARA money, isn't it?
Absolutely. This is part of the, uh, the state of those packages.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's all there for, so it should benefit us from a lot, for, excuse me, for a long time, in terms of saving money and reducing our government footprint as well, so continue to see the benefits of this, this topic.
Okay. Any questions for Tom on this item? And if not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve this contract.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Tom. Mr. Riggs. Chief Carter, you're on deck.
Uh, we received a request to be, uh, to receive one act for installation of gas main for Georgia Island Student Center, and, uh, bid is $12,822.05, and we recommend accepting that bid.
Okay.
You got pointed out in the memo from, uh, Brian DeMichael about the short timeframe on this.
Yes, but originally, the college was set up, and it still will be their buildings, as a master meter, and they need this meter by itself, and we didn't know it. So we've got, they need it by January 15.
Short timeframe combined with everybody else's busy is probably what prompted the one bid.
And the holidays.
Yeah, okay.
The other two told us they couldn't meet the timeframe.
Okay, all right.
Mayor, I've got a question, Mr. Riggs. Um, the contract is $12,842, but the entire project cost is $17,000.
Which is what, that's what the student center, that's what they pay us. That has the material, that's the pipe, the valves of the...
That's the city pipe.
No.
No.
The college paid the, the entire $17,000.
Yeah, we'll reimburse, yeah.
Okay, it's all we have.
Right.
Thank you.
Chris, go ahead.
What's the size of this student center? I just hear it.
The size?
It's, it's going up. Have you been out by it?
I seen from the road.
The steel going up is the building.
Yeah, huge.
Yeah.
I'm trying to remember the square foot.
I don't remember the square foot either.
It's two stories. I'm probably speaking wrong, but I want to say somewhere between 120 and 150. I might be overstating that.
Pretty much that.
I'm going to backtrack. I don't know, Lindsay. I'm trying to remember.
We, we just worked around.
It's kind of a part of that, yes.
Large enough that hopefully they're going to buy a lot of gas, right? All right, any other questions? Okay, now, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion for approval of the Georgia Island Gas Main Installation and Procurement.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, this evening, I bring before you the fifth and final package. In October, we came forward with four or five packages for new equipment for the rescue truck and the new pump. This is the fifth and final package. Uh, we did not want to bring this to you at that time because we want to continue the testing and the field of this equipment. Uh, we have completed our testing to ensure compatibility with the current stock that we have, make sure it's durable and effective, and what we need to do, this is a heavy rescue package, which includes the hydraulic extrication equipment, uh, along with our Caribbean stabilization struts that we would normally carry on a rescue truck. We submitted, requested for six bids, four were returned, high bid of $44,695. Uh, with respect for the request of approval of the low bid for fire line of $30,380, de-verified save is on file now.
Okay. Any discussion?
I think when we talked earlier, uh, with the separate pieces of equipment, you'd estimated that we were saving money by doing that. Do you have any idea what we saved overall?
Currently, right now, we're about $25,000 to $30,000 below on budget costs.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Mayor, are we still in an equipment discussion, not specifically about this? Because I want to share with council and anyone else, the chief and I had a discussion, had we not had that ladder truck, which we bought early, of course, as for our new fire station, things could have been really even tougher the other Saturday night, couldn't it, chief? So all this makes a real difference, what we're doing.
Yes, ma'am, the equipment does. Be very careful to have a purchase, and the place our equipment at does make a big difference. Uh, the piece of equipment that you referred to was actually a title truck that was purchased in 2004. It made a significant impact. Well, quite honestly, it separated the difference of us being able to stop that fire within that structure, or quite frankly, lose a seat block. While you don't use it often.
When you need it, you do.
All right, uh, we do have an item on the table for the rescue equipment package.
Make a motion to approve the rescue equipment package.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief. Mr. Elliott.
Mayor and council, we've got, uh, seven drainage structures located probably in the busiest intersection in Park and Edelman Road, West Avenue. Uh, back when we had the last severe flooding, we had two house, two houses that were basements that flooded. The existing structures aren't adequate to get the water off the road. Um, we solicited two bids from two local contractors that, well, one local and one almost local, uh, that have done work for us before, on state routes, and we really trust their work. They do excellent work. CH Kirkpatrick bid $31,300, and Johnny Grady in Holling bid $29,100. We'd like to recommend a low bid from Johnny's Grady, $29,100, to do this work. Um, funding for these seven structures will come from stormwater budget, miscellaneous transit rates, de-verified save documentation was produced with the bids.
Okay, any questions for Bobby on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the low bid from Johnny's Grady.
Second.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, sir. Lindsay, by the way, Rebecca Bolland, are using her, I'm guessing, her smartphone or just her smart brain.
Telepathy.
$55,000 square feet in that building.
Did you?
Wait a minute, how'd you find that out?
She texted.
Rebecca's, well, Rebecca says that it is. I don't know if it's true or not. Bob Quinn, you got the next one?
She texted.
Didn't that, didn't that make a violation?
You've got an iPad in front of you, you didn't figure that out. You're focused on the meeting, is why, right?
I'm trying to do my job and your job. I'll be leaving with Randy.
Uh, Mr. Mayor and council, we have a request before you tonight to purchase asset management software. The Water Department is being required by the state to implement an asset management program, and this software is the initial step in doing that. It satisfies several requirements that will be made of us. Uh, we've spent, gosh, over the last six months or more researching this. We have come to the conclusion that the software offered by Sims Technology offers the best value to the city, and, uh, for that reason, we recommend your approval of purchase in the amount of $19,045, and it does come with an annual renewal of $7,050.
Any discussion?
Just a question, mayor. How is this contract annual renewal? I heard you say that.
What we have now, I'm sorry to interrupt, and what we have now is an actual proposal from the company, and it lays out what the annual amount is. We actually have representatives from Sims here, and with your permission, if you want an abundance of clarification, I would defer to them. My understanding is, is that we are agreeing that each year we want to maintain service with them. We are on the hook for the $7,050.
So every year, the contract comes?
That's correct.
But as software updates come out, we're included in those software updates.
That is my understanding.
Whereas...
If we get everything for that money, there will be no gotchas.
Okay, and it's totally compatible with our current billing system, and the entire technical side of the city is all in singing its praises, right?
Our entire IT staff has blessed this software.
Okay, very good. Any other questions on this item? If not, Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve Sims Technology software from the Water Department for $19,045 with a $7,050 annual renewal.
I have a question.
All right, we got a question.
Sorry to be lagging behind, but, uh, this Sims, uh, technology includes updates, which you said that, it's your understanding that...
that, she'll understand that anything that comes up within the term of the year, we're covered under that $7,050?
That is correct.
Is that the normal practice for previous years? That's my question.
That would be the number for each year going forward?
We'd experienced this.
No, this was, this is a new contract that we have not done business with in previous years.
I guess it's a learning curve, okay.
And the reason that we're, the reason that we're having to do it is the state is requiring us to do it. That's why it's new.
Okay. Alright, there is a motion on the floor. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Ed, you've got the next two.
Mayor and Council, we have a high-service pump at the water treatment plant with the control valve that's in need of replacement. We evaluated a number of different systems for this, the four top candidates are listed on your memo there. They range in price from $8,911.78 to $28,186.0. We recommend going with a low price option from Timsco, a price of $8,911.78. This will be paid for from maintenance budget and all de-verify safe documentation as we can.
Okay. Any questions on this item? Feel free to make a motion.
I'll be glad to do it.
About 30 minutes.
Motion that we accept the bid from Timsco.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor indicate?
He said Timsco, we done that.
Oh, it's Timsco.
It's the one with $8,000.
I'm sorry. Well, you've made a motion, would you care to withdraw the motion? Since the recommendation was for a different vendor?
Charles Finch's chief.
Okay, now I withdraw.
Motion is withdrawn, would anybody, would you like to try it again?
Sure. I suggest an offer motion that we accept the bid from Charles Finch's company for $8,186.
I'm sorry. Timsco.
No, it's not on here.
Charles Valve.
Not on our.
Charles Valve slash Southern Valve at 8197. That's the way the item was written up from Jim and recommended by me, based on that recommendation.
There's a low B in it.
Okay, there must have been that. I guess I have the memo that was actually posted.
Memo to me from Jim dated 12/6/11. Trust me, Ed.
And the back, in the documentation pages of Southern Valve, that.
Alright, okay, the recommended valve is the Charles Finch Valve at $8,197.
Okay, and you've put that in the form of a motion?
I did.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'll do that.
Thank you, Jase. We have a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Ed, please continue.
About $700.
Good save, Lindsey.
$700, that's good job.
Okay, currently, we have a contract underway at our water pollution control plant to install automated, an automated control system. During the course of the project, we ran into a number of unanticipated items, additional valves that needed control and additional wire from this. This increased the price of the contract by $8,694, brings a total cost of $56,908. We recommend approval of this change order, and it will be paid for from the budget. We can have the verified safe documentation.
Okay. Questions on this item? More discussion? If not, how about a motion?
Make a motion to approve the automated controls at the water pollution control plant.
Second.
Have you done? Huh? Another Falcons around in 30 minutes, lady was talking, Lindsey.
I don't mean to rush you.
In the amount of $8,600. Thank you.
So now you're done, right? Lindsey, would you still care to second that?
Care to second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
He knew what she was going to say.
Hello, Tom.
Good evening. I'm the mayor and council. I present tonight to the public, the 2011 fire, the public 2010. The general fund, revenues have decreased last year by a level of $158,000. Expenses have increased by $155,000. This is mainly due to JJ debt thing that we were, unfortunately, had to make up for the, this year. Three years of revenues that I've monitored on a monthly basis on lump up in sales tax. We are unfortunately down this year by $232,000. Police fines and forfeiture are down this year, $23,000. Billing permits and inspection fees, we have increased to nearly $9,000. And that is due to the fees that we pay for the mortified location.
So basically, those fees are fees that we paid ourselves, and that's why the numbers are up there.
Unfortunately, that is correct.
Gotcha. Took it out of one pocket and stuck it in another.
Correct. Right consumer fund, revenues decreased over last year by $53,000, while the expenses have decreased by $209,000. This decrease is due to a decrease in personnel, personnel expenses, along with the debt service payment. In the gas fund, revenues have increased from last year by $291,000, while expenses have decreased by $433,000. This is due to a decrease in personnel expenses, operating expenses, and the cost of the gas. In the electric fund, revenues have increased from last year by 1.46 million, however, the expenses have also increased by 1.32 million. This is due mainly to the increased cost of purchasing electricity. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased from last year by $12,000. Expenses have increased by $23,000, and this increase is due to increased operating expenses. The solid waste fund, revenues decreased from last year by $14,000. Expenses decreased by $21,000. This is due to decreasing the personnel expenses and operating expenses. And finally, the power optics fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $148,000. If you remember, we received a large payment last year in September from Kentucky, made a link that we don't have this year, and the expenses have decreased by $36,000 due to increased operating expenses, and that is not accounted for.
Questions for Tom on the financial report?
Mayor, I have a question.
Okay.
Tom, isn't this a pretty typical for us to be, expenses outweighing revenues in the gas fund at this time of year?
As the winter long, as the winter months go along, you, for heat and warmth or gas, the revenues will increase along with the, 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 the life.
And is this a typical kind of percentage difference?
You quit having 70-degree days like today, right? There's a downside to having nice weather.
The electricity may.
The electrical may, I disagree. People running their air conditioners in mid-December. Alright, any questions for Tom? Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson, you had a brief presentation that you wanted to bring before council and the public.
Yes, Sir, Mayor and Council, I want to say one thing. We have our final guided hike this, this Wednesday. The winter summers, the winter, the winter solstice hike will be, have two hikes Saturday, we'll be going up Wednesday morning, departing at 6:45 a.m. to watch the sunrise, and then one of my favorite hikes of the year is the winter solstice afternoon. We'll be departing at 4:30 to watch the sunset from the David G Archer Road. It's March.
Can I ask you a question? How many people actually get up that early in the morning and walk up that mountain?
Me and Ed Monax, we've not missed one so far.
But, but Ed's crazy. Besides y'all, who does that?
Last year, we had about five people that, that did the morning.
Six forty-five's not that bad, the spring ones.
Yeah, the sun, I don't have the.
How's the weather supposed to be?
The sun's around 7:25. I think the sun, sunrise is that morning. But what I wanted to talk about, as Richard has on our screen, today officially opens our Pettit Creek Trail Phase Two. People have been walking it the last couple of weeks, but we needed to sustain our boardwalk, which we, we completed that yesterday in the day, and it's officially open. It's a 1.1 mile trail. The, the access point, the trailhead, is at Goodyear Clubhouse parking lot, and when you enter this Pettit Creek Trail, just past the, the bridge, crossing Pettit Creek, going towards, back towards Carisville, towards, towards Irwin Street intersection, you will enter there, and then you'll walk again 1.1 miles, and we'll have a little turnaround to go back the way you came. There, there is no access point at this point in time on the Mission Road side. Our, our other grants will follow, and we will complete our Pettit Creek Trail. But anyway, we are open. It is, it's a gorgeous trail, there's a lot of, a lot of wildlife there. We saw there's been an owl sighting, there's red poodle sighting, there's deer in there, so it's a.
It's a bear, too, isn't it?
Nice leisurely walk.
Bear?
Sir?
Bear?
I haven't seen a bear.
Just wanted to see Lindsey paying attention.
But anyway, I do want everybody to use it.
Looks great, thank you, Greg. Any other business that needs to come before council this evening? Personally, would like to thank not only the Fire Department, Ms. Tate had alluded to the fire, the old Stein's building, want to thank them and, and all the other departments that worked in concert with the Fire Department to minimize the damage, and appreciate everybody's efforts in, in serving our community there. And also, if you're celebrating Christmas, Merry Christmas to you. If you're celebrating Hanukkah, Happy Hanukkah. That starts Monday evening, I do believe, and whatever else you celebrate, happy holidays on behalf of myself and the rest of council. And if there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sound moved.
Adjourn.
You shot me.
You shot.
Get interrupted by that guy.